This special city council meeting workshop is called to order. Item number one, public comments. We don't have any down here, I don't think.
Nope.
So that's all right. Item two, annual update from code compliance and building inspections.
(inaudible).
Whoops.
Sorry.
See, I banged it anyway. So I'm taking the hot seat.
Yes ma'am.
A different kind.
Talk to us.
Talk to us? Okay. Well, just to make it easier, got a few handouts to push down the way.
Kim, push the button.
You really think that's gonna... Oh, yes sir. Okay, I cannot see the PowerPoint. I'm sure it's on.
Yes.
And we're going...
It just came on.
Keep truckin'. Keep truckin'. Okay. Okay, well, we're going to run over quickly tonight until Kim tells me otherwise, a little bit about community development. We are a staff of four, and we handle a number of different things from planning to zoning, building permits, plan review, construction inspections, code enforcement or code compliance, nuisance abatement, floodplain management, and historic preservation oversight. That's our plan. Tonight, however, we're just going to focus on two of them, construction and code enforcement. On the next slide, though, we do talk very briefly about our boards and commissions. And with a staff of four, we need all the help we can get, so we have a great group of citizen volunteers who help us in a number of areas, including the planning commission, the transportation authority, board of adjustment, and historic preservation. So I have to give a little shout out to all of them. In terms of building permits, we utilize the international building code. When an owner or a developer submits plans to the cities where we give approval, we use the IBC or the international building code.
He's two slides behind.
He's two slides behind. Well, this is up here.
I used it later.
Oh, thanks all, and appreciate your patience.
Now he's up.
Now we're up. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Erin.
One more.
At any rate, the international building code is a code that is actually used nationally. We follow that. Jim Hanke, who's our building inspector, is certified, which means he's taken eight tests in all the building categories and is recertified annually. So he is well qualified to cover the areas of electrical, plumbing, HVAC, and building as well. Those are the building issues that we look for. And in addition to that, we have some land use issues that we also review with every building plan that comes through, and that covers the zoning issues, floodplain review, landscape as well as building design. And Kevin, going to the next slide. The actual building... Was that smooth? Okay.
Yes, now we're good.
Now we're good. The actual building permit process is fairly straightforward. What we try to do is have a pre-development meeting, especially on the larger projects, in that we go over the scope of the project and bring in other members from other departments here at the city. And what we're trying to do is to meet with the developer or the owner and find out exactly what they're trying to do so that we have an understanding of what they're looking for, and they have an understanding of the code and some of the design issues that the city is looking for. We go through that with the idea that it cuts down on any kind of redrawing and cuts down on the developer's cost as well. We then have another, what we call a full-blown site review or plan review with the owner and his engineer or architect, go into extreme detail on the plans, both on civil and the architectural drawings. Jim will then look at everything and issue permits, and then the whole process really begins at breaking ground, going through the construction process, Jim doing the inspections for each of those items that we had indicated before. And then, once all of those are done, a certificate of occupancy is called for, once the building has been fully built, and there's one last review to make sure everything has been inspected, to make sure it's been fully built out according to plan, all the Ts are crossed, Is dotted, and so on. Once a certificate of occupancy is received, then a person can move in and open the building. The next chart on construction permits refers specifically to construction of new homes. We average, in a year, about 10 new homes here in the city of Guthrie. And as you can see from some of the numbers up there, they look somewhat skewed, but we've had two subdivisions that have come in. In 2010, we're showing 42 new residences; in reality, that also includes 34 units in a subdivision. As well as in 2012, when Silent Harvest went in, it shows 50 new permits for single-family residences, but that includes 41 of their homes as well. Over the last five years, our residential permit issuance has slowly gone up. Commercial building, new building for commercial projects has increased slightly. We don't have a lot of that, but we're seeing gradual slow increases in residential permits. We average about 400 or so permits a year in all the other categories. You know, when somebody puts in a new furnace, or they put in a swimming pool, or they need a new heater, all of those things add up. And again, we go out and make sure everything's been constructed, that the electrical wiring isn't, you know, going to do something harmful to the house and so on. In terms of inspections, a lot of these relate not only to the new buildings, but all inspections that are done, which would be remodels as well. We generally average about 10 inspections per a new home. So we lay eyes on the project about that many times. And again, those are inspections that cover plumbing, electrical, HVAC, the actual building and framing, and so on. The numbers on here that you see where it says year-to-date, we do our collection of numbers based on the city's fiscal year, which is October to the end of September, as opposed to the regular January-to-January calendar year. Code compliance, we're going to hit that one next. Jim Fish is our code compliance officer, and within that area, it's not just dealing with high grass and weeds. Code compliance covers not only the nuisances, which could be those high grass and weeds, but junk, trash that's accumulated, abandoned vehicles, demolitions also as part of that, minimum maintenance, where we have houses that have, say, peeling paint, broken windows, things that basically are a detriment or a blight to the area. Code compliance also covers historic preservation, any zoning violations, if somebody has erected some kind of business in a residential area that shouldn't be there, that's also something that code compliance takes care of. We review floodplain management and also sign permits. So all of those things are categorized as part of code compliance. Again, it's not just high grass and weeds. Now, the actual process within codes is fairly straightforward, and I'll go into a little bit of history briefly on the next slide. But what happens, we get quite a number of calls, and that's where we get our, how should we say, the list of places we need to look at from people who call in and tell us about it. We also, on our way out to see items, he'll make a list and say, okay, well, this one has this issue, and so on. But that then triggers that first inspection. He'll go by and see, for example, that the grass is higher than eight inches. That's a non-compliance issue. He'll make that first contact by sending the person who lives at that address a letter. And again, that details looking up who the owner of record is and so on, and sends them a letter. We like to operate with the understanding that maybe the person doesn't realize that they should mow their yard. Crazy, but, you know, other things come up on Saturdays, understand that. Or they think that eight inches isn't that high, but it is. So we send them a letter, say, you need to mow your yard. We then give them, and we state this in the letter, that they have 10 days to mow the yard or to fix whatever the nuisance is. Jim then goes by the yard, again, takes a look at it. If on that 10th day, the grass has not been mowed, comes back to the office, sends them a letter that says, missed the deadline, sorry, here's your ticket, and the ticket is included in the letter. The next contact is when that person gets to see the judge. Now, that's not always the way we've handled it, but this is what we're doing now. So, going to the next one, I'd like to talk a little bit about code compliance and the history. All of you, no doubt, have probably received a call or two from someone in your ward with a complaint, or a neighbor, or somebody that's turned them in for something. So code compliance is truly controversial. You know, people are going to be upset. People do not like to be told that they have to do something that they think they shouldn't have to do. Well, you know, we live in a city, and there are rules and guidelines that you as a body make that we then enforce. And what we find, I could easily get a call in the morning from someone who wants to know, why aren't you enforcing this? Why aren't you more strict? You know, why doesn't the planning department do this? 20 minutes later, I'll get another call from someone who's saying, you're being too mean. You have no compassion. How can you do this to me? I have, you know, name the list of things. And so there really is a happy medium that we try to find. Can't please everybody. I just have to please my boss, who pleases you guys, and then we're all good. Historically, in the past, though, the city has been fairly aggressive in their enforcements of code and nuisance abatement and the like. Now, about three years ago, a different tact was taken. We were requested to basically ease up just a touch, you know, to do more education in our contact with people and to be kinder, gentler, compassionate, that type of thing. So now what we're doing is searching to improve the individual property values through that community compliance. Community compliance then helps raise property values of everyone in the neighborhood, and so that's the tactic that we're taking. Within code compliance, we try very, very hard to make sure that we're giving good customer service, that, you know, not only are we dealing with the person who has an issue, but we're also trying to protect the neighbors around them as well. So we have a whole population to deal with. If a person has unique circumstances, we will work with them if they have a major problem. If it's just grass, you can mow your yard. But if there's something where there are extenuating circumstances, we will work with them if they will develop a schedule whereby they promise by such-and-such date and is agreed upon to get a certain thing done. Demolition project, if it's a home that is way beyond repair and vacant, that is a situation that has to come before you, the city council, and you make that determination that a house can be torn down. Now, within code compliance, I have a little stats list there, and again, this deals with the first six months in the last column. And right now, we're just entering our highest, heaviest time, when, you know, the grass is growing and so on, so we'll get more and more incidents of code compliance issues. In this last period, he's done 541 inspections, and this is, again, within the last six months. And we've issued 16 tickets in this period of time, again, using this new program that we're on whereby second letter, here's your ticket, and going forward. Last year, he had inspected over 1,600 buildings and sent letters out to the owners of a little over 1,000 of them. Sometimes we get requests to go take out, to take a look at something, and it's not really a major issue. Or they'll see him come by in his car, and people get concerned and want to know what's going on, and he'll stop. And surprisingly, things get taken care of pretty quickly, so...
I have a question.
You may...
Why are the numbers of inspections so variable there? I mean, so you've got 841 in '11, then you have a whole lot in '13. It's going to be down again in '14, just oh, that number, it's a little over 1,000. I mean, what makes it variable like that?
Since 2011, we've had quite a change in our staffing level. There was times when we had two people doing this, for example. And right now, we are also training Jim to take on other responsibilities as well, including the floodplain issues, historic preservation, and so on. So his time pretty much is being torn within that area. And going from having several people do it to one has been an issue. And in some of the times, again, when, from 2013 to 2014, he had spent some time really discussing some of the issues, trying to find owners, for example. And there's one in particular, councilman that you're familiar with, where a person's had a really dilapidated home, but the person died, and the people are out of state. And oftentimes, these things require some tracking down to do, so... But that really brings us to something that we're trying to change. And going to the next slide, this summer, we're going to be doing what's called a sweep throughout the town, focusing on the downtown more than not. But during the summer months, I've been able to get the assistance of two of our police officers who will also help out. So we'll have three people during the summer months, when we have our highest growing season, that will assist with all of the code issues. We are going to focus on the historic district in the downtown area. One officer will be just within that area, and then the other two, Jim and the other police officer, will look at minimum maintenance issues, the high grass and weeds, the typical things that plague us during the summer.
How many homes do we end up having to typically mow their lawn, because they either don't, or they're not there?
Excuse me. This last year, we did 63.
63.
Right. And the procedure, again, for that, as I'm starting to get things coming back on us, we go ahead and abate the property. We have an outside vendor who does that work for us. We get the bill. We record it as a lien, and we also record it as a special assessment, so that with the next year's property tax bill, that person who owns the property will have to pay it, not years and years later when the property is sold.
So that's been pretty good, and we're getting the money?
It's happening. Yes, yes.
Okay. Now, is the number of abatements going up or down?
It's...
63, a high number, low number?
63 was a high number.
Okay.
Yes.
Specifically for grass?
Right. We use the money that we have budgeted for demos, also for abatements in general. And at this point, I want to get them clean. If we can't find people, in the past, we've tried to find, at this point, we need to move on. I want to cut. And the problem is, growing season is several months. It's not cut at once, and then it's done. Sometimes during that cycle, you've got to do it several times.
And last year, it was wet, and we had a higher...
We had a higher...
We made all this year.
Yeah. I have had, you know, we have several pieces of property that are habitual, and I believe it was about two years ago, I had one person tell me, because we had to, you know, call him again, he goes, oh, I don't mow my lawn until I hear from you. Every year. And it's like, there aren't people like that, and that's just not right.
I guess you need to call him first thing. Mow your lawn.
Pretty much. Yeah. Go on the counter.
Got to call Joe Smith. Mow your lawn.
Robo-call it, big deal.
Yeah. Well, I've got a few before and after shots. On this first one, again, this is just a high grass and weeds thing, you would think. But underneath that high grass and weeds, oftentimes, when we have to go out and hire somebody to mow, we've had situations where they get in there and then find tires or equipment or... No dead bodies, no, we're okay there. Situations where our vendor has started to go in, and then it's, you know, he encounters it, you know, either damages his mower, and so then we come up with a big cost to pull all the debris out before he can even mow it. But in this situation, you see what looks like a lot of stuff, and with a nice yard afterwards. On the next slide, you know, this is a simple one, real small, not a big deal. Yes, the grass is high, but there's just a lot of accumulation of brush, you know. Some tree limbs have fallen down, looks tacky. Takes, what, an hour and a half to pick up the trash, mow the yard, and for heaven's sakes, trim the curb. My head peeve. It's kind of like putting the icing on the cake. Got to do that. Got to do that. Last slide, a little word on Neighborhood Solutions. You've no doubt heard about it many times, but just to remind you, Neighborhood Solutions is a nonprofit organization. Their purpose is to improve communities by improving neighborhoods. They encourage neighbors to talk to each other, neighbors to help each other. They're a great organization. They're a good source of volunteers within their neighborhood, and they really revitalize the neighborhood. I mean, this is truly, you know, the ideal of neighbors helping neighbors. So they're a good sort. If you don't have an association in your area, recommend you get started. So with that, I would sure like to take any questions that you may have and answer.
Where are we on the demo, demoing of the homes? I notice in 2011 and '12, we did quite a few, but in '13, we only did eight.
Right. Yeah, and that's the purpose also of doing this sweep, so that I can take Jim to focus on pulling the demolitions in while the other guys are doing the...
You have a master plan.
Still have it.
You still have it.
We use the same one, absolutely.
What we were fortunate on last year was the people that we were going to... When you're talking about a city having a demo versus, we have a, what do you call it? When we told them that they were going to...
Scare tactic.
They did it. So we were fortunate. So what we want to do right now is take Jim to be able to do that, start all that demolition work now, and start getting the notices out, et cetera, and see how many people will cooperate without the city having to pay for it.
So last year, you accomplished your goal of getting...
You bet.
Was it 50 or something we had on the list?
We have on the list, but we were looking at that as over many years, getting that done.
Sure, but you've got over 20 some here right now.
Right. Yeah, we're doing really well. But some of the, I mean, these are demos totally done citywide. That also includes people who have come forward on their own, and they've told me that, you know, well, I see what you guys are doing, and I'm sure I can take care of my demo cheaper than have to pay the city.
So this list, is that total?
Yes.
Total, them and city?
Yes, that is correct.
So it's still about 50?
No.
Oh, no, it's diminished from that substantially.
So did you, I know you do a rating of one to five, and five best goals and stuff like that.
Still there.
How do we deal, I know that's based on a score, how do we deal with visibility? Because there's some houses that have high visibility, but I could argue that they have a four level of deterioration. It just seems to me that if it's high visibility, even at a four, maybe that could trump a five, if nobody sees it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, visibility is certainly an issue, and we go over all properties and then bring them to you as well to have you take a look at them.
And Renee, thank you for telling me about that a couple months ago, and we've discussed that, and we've added that as a criteria.
Because I know something like around the temple, for example, we're on the route of the tour, that we should make sure that if it's on that tour, and it's a four even, that maybe that's a priority, because people see that from outside, and we don't promote that.
Yeah. That's something with this go-around that will be fully included in the equation of assessing which ones are. Because you're right, there are some that are in bad shape, but if they're way on an outskirts, no, we want something that, I mean, as people are driving home at night and they see it, you know, that needs to be...
Because I remember, a year or two ago, I saw one, it's like, oh, I've seen that, but it was like, no one else could see it, because it was just in the middle of kind of nowhere, and I was like, well, should we make that a priority? So that's what made me think about visibility, because I see houses around the temple, for example, because I spend a lot of time around the temple. It's like, if people go to the temple, that's an attraction, yet we have these houses really fall apart near the temple. Those should have high priority and...
We've had a couple of houses where they, well, any house that's been demoed, of course, is going to look bad, that might not have quite looked that bad, but because they had accumulated so much, I won't say trash, garbage in the basement, it was a health issue. So we had to move that up regardless of the location, as I recall. But just that it was a health hazard for the neighbors, you know, it attracted skunks, snakes, and those kinds of things. The lady next door had a little one, you know, that moves it up quickly.
So there's 44 homes on this list now, so you're making a pretty good dent in them. So you're adding to that list, I'm assuming, if you've only got a few more left.
Right.
You're at 50.
Yeah. And it'll be time to go through and reassess. And again, you know, we'd really like homes to be rehabbed and restored where possible. You only want to take down something that can't be rehabbed, you know, where the roof is on the first floor type thing. Definitely, yes.
Any other questions for Renee? Concerns? All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Okay, item number three, discussion regarding boards and commissions.
Per our last conversation, what we wanted to do for you guys, I think there were two issues that came up. We wanted to make sure that you knew if they had, each of these board members, if they had term limits, what that was, and then if there were attendance requirements. So we tried to break this down into a list. The yellow will indicate if the position is close to vacant or is currently vacant, and so what we've advertised for as of, I think technically as of Friday, this list was updated. So there are actually maybe one or two that have been advertised since then. So from that, I will say the airport board, a little bit different. We, I sent to you all on a weekly update that we were looking at, we did propose to Edmund a three-term limit, which would equal nine years. And so that agreement will be up before the council in June-ish, or somewhere around there. So that one is a little bit different, because that has to be in agreement with Edmund. We can't make that decision solely on our own. So we proposed a nine-year on that. So with that being said, I think, Mayor, it's your pleasure, this was one of your projects, if there's something that has jumped out to you, some conversations that we might want to have about whether it be term limits, attendance requirements, or any requirements of the position, but what we learned from the last discussion was really the only board that had real requirements, and they were kind of strange-ish, is historical preservation, that HPC.
Historical is a weird one.
My question is, there's no, we don't have when they meet or how soon they meet on here.
Oh, it's on another spreadsheet, but I'd be happy to, we can do it from memory.
Because that would be...
Yeah, which one?
Kind of important on how you set your...
Well, it depends. Like, forestry board only meets quarterly, so their rule is going to be different than probably a monthly. So board of adjustment, they only meet when...
Or HP?
Or, I'm sorry. Board of adjustment, how do they...
Board of adjustments only meets whenever there, whenever there is something before them.
Yeah, it's just if there's an application. Same with...
Planning.
Planning commission. So there's no...
So planning only meets when needed?
When needed, yes.
It's not on the website?
It should. When application...
It does say that on the website?
I will check to see, but yes, we don't meet unless...
and they were kind of strange-ish, is historical preservation by HPC.
Historical is a weird one.
My question is, there's no, we don't have when they meet, or how when they meet on here.
Oh, it's on another spreadsheet, but I'd be happy to, we can do it from memory.
Because that would be...
Yeah, which one?
Kind of important on how you set your...
Well, it depends. Like forestry board only meets quarterly. So their rule is going to be different than probably a monthly. So Board of Adjustment, they only meet when...
Or HP?
Or, sorry, Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustments only meets whenever there, whenever there is something before them.
Yeah, it's just a, if there's an application. Same with Planning Commission. So there's no...
So Planning only meets when needed?
When needed, there has to be an...
It says it on the website.
It should, when application...
It does say that on the website?
I will check to see, but yes, we don't meet unless, unless there is a project that we're working on.
They've got a schedule, but if there's nothing on it, they will send out a thing that cancels the meeting.
Oh, I see.
So it's always scheduled, but, and then if something comes up, they'll schedule a special meeting if there's a...
We have to report to the state on a Planning Commission, that's under state law. We have to report when they would meet, but we don't meet if there's not an application.
I've got a question. It has under this term limit, like, for example, under Board of Adjustment, three-year. Does that mean it's a three-year term limit?
It's a three-year term. I'm sorry, we should have just, it's a three-year term.
Oh, okay. So it's a term limit, I thought, wow, I guess we're term limiting all this for one term.
There are no limits on any of right now.
Okay.
Except for the library, two full terms plus any portion... The library's the only one that has a term limit, which is two full terms.
Any reason why? They're like, nobody else is?
All the ordinances were written in different council terms.
I mean, is it good to have unlimited term? Or, you know, term, no term limits?
Depends what board member it is. No, I mean, it's, you know, and that, we as staff honestly don't have a whole lot of input as far as, I mean, it's who y'all appoint. It's, and it's, I'll be honest, on the airport board, we thought nine years is plenty of time, you know. But then again, when you get some great arborist, let's say, on a forestry board, man, it's nice to have an expert. So, up to you guys.
Term limits, to me, aren't really all that, I don't know, important in a lot of these. But at the same time, we've always got other people that want to get in there and give it a try. So then you've got to weigh that a little bit, so I think we need to think about the term limits on some of these, just to rotate them out. But again, depends on the position they hold. So if they move up a little higher, maybe we need a different set of term limits for somebody that moves up to the chair limit, because they're doing a little bit more, and I don't know if that's really fair.
Well, one thing we thought about too, is it's still up to the pleasure of the council to replace or not replace. So even if you don't have it in the ordinance, you still are deciding whether or not they have another term.
I recommended the council to appoint, and y'all would say yea or nay. So, you know, term limits are based upon how we feel, when you really get right down to it. So, but, and so hopefully some of these others will be set that, you know, it's like when they come up in the end of their three-year term, or their term is there, then they still have to fill out an application to reapply for that position. Plus, we then consider all the other applications that are at that time council appoints and approves. So we're getting back into that one. And what scares me is if I read this one right on the airport board. We've got all four of them coming up this year, am I reading that right, or is that?
No, fourteen, fifteen, one, two, fifteen.
One this year, two next year, one...
Okay, one this year.
Should be close, just not...
One of the things I have a concern with, though, it's interesting, some of these have some diversity, and some have very little diversity when it comes to wards. I don't know if there should be a policy that says, you know, if only a few people are applying, don't worry about it. But if you have a diversity, we should try to get, let's say, Ward Three's not represented, and it's a Ward Three person, try to get a Ward Three, you know, to think about diversity on the wards in the city.
And from everything, yeah, from everything I've seen, it's a matter, in the past, it's been a matter of who applies. Now, all of a sudden, we're getting more applications in some of these, so we might get some more diversity in the wards and get more...
So we have six people apply, there's no Ward Three person on there, maybe it's, you know, kind of bumps that up, or is a thought to consider. Because, for example, the, was it the Board of Adjustments, only Ward One or Two represented at all.
And some people just don't want to be on there.
Yeah, and I think you've got to weigh that.
Well, I think the issue that we've already talked about previously was the attendance. When you've got, you know, several people on the forestry board that don't show up, you only meet quarterly. That means, you know, what, they never show up in a year, or maybe show up once for the whole year for a meeting? That's not really effective for anybody.
Do we have all sorts of...
I definitely think on that board, you need to put in some requirements for attendance.
Do we have a common attendance requirement for all these, or are they different?
No.
It says right here, John, look under attendance.
There's not a common...
Yeah, and so boards are five members, and some are seven members. And so some of the five-member boards, we have people that want to get on there, so we might consider putting those up to seven. And so, but that changes when people come off a board and that kind of thing. So it's not a, this is not a real simple thing to fix, and it doesn't fix overnight. It's going to be an ongoing work on this thing for a little bit.
You know, and I'll say, on the forestry board, we need to do a better job, you know, we did fix, one of them wasn't getting in. And we, along with the chairperson, need to do a better job of telling people when the meetings are in a timely manner. You know, I'd hate to go and change ordinances if it's something that we can just fix. If we need to do a better job of that, in which we've agreed that we do, we hope to do better as a staff to get people here. We don't want people to be absent.
Right, we want them here, and we want people to participate, so that's the key. And so it's almost, the more you can get in here, you know, we don't want fifteen-member boards, but, you know...
Would it be helpful that when we were looking at these, is to get a report like this? It'd be nice to get when they started, and when, you know, so we know, has this person been around twelve years?
I'll email you the whole spreadsheet. This is a much bigger workshop. Yeah, I'll have you all look at this one, there's different tabs, so we'll find that tab.
I think that'd be real helpful to get this sheet.
And we have a tab that says like how they're appointed, if it's a mayor or councillor, you know.
But every time we're considering these, it seems like they're all mainly, well, sometimes margined, but at least...
When they started.
Get what it is for that committee, so we have a sense of who's on it, how long they've been on, what kind of, who's, what wards they're from.
I may not have it to you by Friday, but let's say by next Friday, we can kind of update.
And it seems like to me, I mean, I think it'd be helpful if we standardized some of the stuff. Like, for example, it seems like to me we should, there's so many different months that they get replaced. I think to me, it'd be nice if we would standardize that, and say they're all in March, or they're all in May, or all October. Either staggered.
Well, the staggering by boards...
But they're all, you can stagger the years, but stagger so they're all like March but staggered. Or, so that way you can make all these all at once, we're not skipping these things, we're not, oh, now March, we've got to do this. Well, May, we've got to do this board, well, October, we've got to do this board. It's hard to keep track of all that stuff.
I think it'd be better the way it is, because you've got, you may have to make twenty appointments, and you have to, can spend some time on twenty appointments, well, if you spread that out over the year. Yeah, I think if they're all reeling, it'll do a better job.
Yeah, we don't need to make more appointments.
Staff can do, yeah.
We can clear our council every coffin.
And there's the state, you know, things stagger just so we, until we get everything fixed up.
And then each ordinance, yeah, some of the ordinances say when they are, so... I'm just going to speak to you hard. If we don't have to change the ordinances, it does make us, a little bit easier on us, they're ready to go to rewriting every ordinance.
Right. We did, there are just some things we need to clean up a little bit. And then after that, we can start looking at other stuff, you know.
How about we make the promise to you all that we will do better at watching attendance, and doing the requirements for attendance, and promoting the attendance? I think we can fix that without a change in ordinance. I think we can do a better job. On the terms, y'all just tell us what you... I, part of me says, when you look at how to make policies in ordinances, is that if you make it too strict in the ordinance, it doesn't give y'all the ability, when that time comes, to make that decision. Because even if you say there's a term limit, what if there's someone that you want maybe to not be in that position earlier than the term limit? So it allows you the flexibility as a council. It might be something at every council retreat that we really talk about. We kind of remind each new council, and that just becomes part of our culture, that at the council retreat, we have an honest conversation about who's serving on the wards.
Now, I know we have some of the names on there on the webpage. Do we have all these systematically on the webpage? And when they're, when they're done? That would help when I'm applying, I want to be park board, I know who's on it.
Parks is, I think it's updated. I think, I will double check it.
Okay.
Most of it is.
Want to make sure.
And then now with, now that we know who we've got coming up, the word gets out on the website, Facebook, whatever, as to we have openings on this board or whatever, apply for it, and we get more people in here to apply for it, so...
How do you apply? How do, I mean, how do you get the word out? You put it in the monthly?
We Facebook it, I can't remember who did this. We've done the insert before, we do the website, and we weren't really doing that real well.
Could we coordinate with Mary to put it on the calendar? So like, opening for park board vacancy, or a deadline, or closing? Yeah. Something like that, that would be, because a lot of people, I go to the calendar a lot.
I don't know if we do a closing day.
I go to her, I go to the chamber calendar a lot, because it really kind of keeps you up with events, and that would be a great place for citizens to see. I think a lot of people go to that open until calendar.
In the past, that wouldn't happen. Now we're working into that slowly. We're fixing this a step at a time. So that's a, we want to do it right, we don't want to have to come in here a couple years later.
And I think that would help also, the more we get this out in a very systematic way, the more people realize, hey, this is what's going on, I should apply for that. And I think the citizens academies are very good for this as well.
Oh, they're asking, yeah.
Might be people we, do we, would we consider if you were at one of those and attended one of those, to maybe send those guys information on vacancies, just a thought?
Sure, sure.
Since they're, they've already gone through it, they have an understanding, and these would be ideal for any of these positions.
A fertile recruiting ground, I would think.
Yeah, yeah.
I imagine you're already doing that. Okay, any other questions on boards and committees? We got a lot there for staff, we'll come and look at. Okay, number four, discussion regarding agenda items. Anything on the agenda items? The water meters?
Yes, sir. Are they surplused? Oh, the...
They're not yet, but the part we're going to send out, they're, do we have any idea yet? Those are brass, so brass is very...
What we'll do to increase the prices, as they're being pulled right now, we've separated them, it doesn't take very long, you pull out the brass. There's a few different ways you can surplus these. What y'all's job is, what we're asking you to do tonight, is to just say that we can surplus them. We believe in estimate, we've asked for estimates of what it would cost to scrap, what we would receive to scrap them. That's around fifty-two to fifty-five thousand. In an effort to get our best dollar amount, I'm asking that purchasing send out a request for bids to get a bidded price. If that bid price is below the fifty-two thousand, then we'll scrap them for fifty-two thousand, or fifty-two to fifty-five.
So y'all are taking the non-brass stuff out of it, so we get more money that way, okay.
Then I get working down.
And not on the consent agenda, but we're getting in, this is earlier than last year on the sports field agreements. We're going to, we need to talk about cut with flats. Those Little League fields, they got brand-new backstops. If you haven't been down there, I'm telling you, they look nice. And we got some dugouts coming in, am I correct? Or maybe, we're going to talk about that later, okay. Won't worry about that. The fields themselves are still poor. Can, do we need to talk to the Little League Association to get down there and plow those things up? And then, you know, disc them, and I know it's in a flood zone, but there isn't anything that says we can't level those fields out? Make the place nicer for the kids when they're running the base path? And turn at least the infield into dirt until we can get some grass down there. I'm sure we could find some parents with tractors to do that.
We've met with the president multiple times, Little League, we're happy to have that conversation again. I think the question is always going to be who y'all want to fund it. If we want to ask the Little League to, we have asked how much money they have, so we are aware of that. We're happy to have another conversation with them, like we are doing with dugouts. It kind of goes back to every city does this different. Sometimes the Little League pays to use fields, sometimes, you know, so it's however y'all want to do that.
Not asking for the city to pony up yet, or at all? But asking that maybe, I know we have, some of these parents out there, they have big equipment, and they wouldn't mind coming in there on a Saturday and really going at it on city property to make those fields a little nicer.
We'd be happy to allow that.
Is that a parks-funded issue?
Yeah, it's just not funded to rebuild the fields, but, I mean, we'd be happy to partner with them, provide labor.
I think, you know, for, since we just recalled, it looks like a hundred-dollar deposit is some in-kind community contributions.
Well, the softball deal does, right, Paul's Field.
Theirs is a little bit different than Conwood. At Conwood, you're right, they're smaller.
Do we not kind of require, or ask, that we would expect sometime, whether it's helping mow it, or...
I do mow it.
Do they do themselves, all three?
We do, they do.
Well, that's...
All three entities.
We have our mowing schedule. We provide all the mowing. They do trash pickup, I thought, why? But this is a city-provided service. It's not where...
So cities already, I, when I read it, I...
The city mows it on all those.
They had the schedule on there, so I thought it was...
So we provide quite a bit.
You guys do quite a bit if you mow.
We do some field.
And field work.
Yeah.
So I have seen cities that don't touch it at all, and the Little League, that's what we do.
Does it?
But I'll tell you, what have we done forever? We've provided that service.
Well, we need, well...
I don't think we should push it.
I, I probably agree.
You don't think it's what?
I don't think we should push it. I think if you mow it, you, that's a considerable amount of time and money spent.
But we're happy to keep talking to Little League about what we allow. I think what they thought, because when I first met with the president, I'm sorry, I can't...
Sean.
He was under the impression that they weren't allowed to do certain things, so we cleared that up this year. Was that you can, and so I think there was just a miscommunication for a long time about what could be done.
How about anything like painting?
Well, they repainted their boxes, and they're supposed to be moved today, far back down there.
I think there's progress.
Just would like to...
The storage containers.
How about anything like the poles, or anything in the background?
They're all branded.
That's all branded?
All branded. Those are, and they are going to, the two that was left, they are going to go back and do some painting on those old ones.
If you saw our staff last week, they were covered, you could see silver paint on most of the employees.
They are branded. All right, thank you. Anything else on the agenda items?
Do we want to talk, Marlene's here, does anybody have any questions about that aging service? Since she's here.
Aging services, I suspect, so it's on consent.
I'd like to quit aging.
You don't want to do that. I see too many people quitting aging.
There's only one way to quit aging.
That's right.
And then you're decaying.
Any questions on the aging service?
I think, I think, I'll tell you, from what we see, the work that Marlene does, it's amazing. It's a great service to our community. We're proud as city staff to allow them to use this facility. I think it's a great use of a facility.
I would second that.
They do a super job. They do a super job.
Thank you, I want to tell my staff that, they'll be very happy to do this. We're very happy to be a part of the city.
Okay, item number five, request for future items of discussion. Hearing none. Number six, we're adjourned.